This is our community's house. We're all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all to our special meeting of council for Monday, June 23rd at five o'clock. This meeting is it's called a special meeting of council because it wasn't originally in our calendar of meetings at the beginning of the year. And so we added it in order to be able to consider the annual report. So council, we have an agenda that's been circulated. Any errors or omissions from the agenda as presented? None. Moved by councillor back, second by councillor Forbes called a question, all in favor, contrary minded motion is carried. We're here for one purpose tonight, which is to consider the annual report. And just want to check in with the order of events here. The annual report does provide an opportunity for members of the public to make representations. And just wanted to check, did you want to do your staff presentation first, or would you like to do the public report first? Presentation first, okay. So at this point, I'm going to look to Sarah Walker to do your presentation on the annual report.
Welcome. Good evening, your worship, council and members of the public joining us tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the report in front of you this evening. The annual reporting process is a statutory requirement under the community charter. I'll be providing a brief overview of the requirements as well as highlighting key progress milestones from the report. Joining me this evening is Maria de Fatima Lazo, and our presentation will be just under 15 minutes. Thank you. The community charter under section 98 requires that each year prior to June 30th, council prepare an annual report and make the report available for public inspection. This includes the municipality's audited annual financial statements for the previous year, a list of the permissive tax exemptions provided by the municipal council, and for each exemption, the amount of property tax that would have been imposed during the previous year. A report on the municipality services and operations for the previous year, a progress report on the performance of the municipality with respect to established objectives and measures. A statement of objectives and measures that will be used as the basis for determining the municipality's performance during the current year and following year. And finally, any details of declarations of disqualification made against individual council members during the previous year. Statutory notice requirements have been met. The annual report was advertised on June 11th and 18th in the North Shore News. Copies of the report are available for pickup at Municipal Hall and at District Libraries. The report has also been made available online in a printable PDF format. Public submissions were encouraged in several formats, including the ability to engage directly with the district on the annual report webpage, Facebook, and via email. All submissions will be responded to in a summary report that will be published on our website in July. Since this is an area that's typically of interest, as of noon today, we've received 205 total views to the webpage and 93 downloads of the annual report. This is consistent with previous years. The financial information available in the report includes information about audited consolidated financial statements, permissive tax exemptions, and supplemental financial information. I won't speak any further to this as the finance team is available to comment or clarify as required. The 2024 annual report provides a summary of progress achieved in 2024 measured against the goals and priorities of our corporate plan. Supplemental information makes it easier for the public to understand the report while activity and performance measures illustrate the breadth of municipal services and operations. The corporate plan informs departmental and divisional work plans which enable staff to deliver day-to-day operations, programs, and services to meet the needs of our community. Key performance indicators were identified in last year's annual report to ensure both alignment and progress reporting on council priority. Taking into account councils' feedback from last year, this year our KPIs include three-year historical trends. This allows us to look at the realities and challenges facing the district today and capture any relevant data following the post-pandemic environment. The district's community profile based on the 2021 census was added this year to provide local and regional context when reviewing the annual report. A new section on special impacts was also added to include external factors that may have affected resource allocation and capacity challenges. This year, such impacts include the provincial housing legislation, rising utility costs from Metro Vancouver, and the 2024 atmospheric river event in October. For over a decade, we have taken an approach that is consistent by using the corporate plan as a reference to monitor how we've done on set objectives and to look forward. In 2023, council identified strategic priorities for the 2023 to 2026 corporate plan and established the following six corporate goals. We've made important progress on each of these goals and look forward to continued progress in the final year of council's term. I will now pass it over to Ms. Lazo to review some of the performance highlights. Thank you.
Welcome.
For goal number one, in 2024, we continue to develop safe, integrated, and accessible networks of roadways and pathways by upgrading transportation infrastructure, such as the pedestrian and cycling network within our urban boundary compared to 2020. A highlight of this is that we also added a new metric that tracks the usage of the Spirit Trail over the Lynn Creek Crossing. In addition to this, we completed the Main Street Cycling Project and the Mount Seymour Parkway Safety Improvement Project. These projects address gaps in our active transportation network and better connect our town centers and key destinations as envisioned by our official community plan. The district also installed the first prefabricated aluminum bridge, an innovation that reduces costs and installation time. In collaboration with the City of North Vancouver at the District of North Vancouver Public Libraries, we also launched the e-cargo bike lending program. And finally, we also supported the completion of the FIPS Exchange App Break Project in partnership with the Ministry of Transportation in Transit and Translinked, providing more capacity, better lightning for improved safety, and increased comfort for North Shore Transit customers. For goal number two, we continue to provide access to a range of affordable and diverse housing options for residents. Compared to 2023, the municipality increased the number of building permits issued and the occupancies for rental and supportive supportive and care units and market ownership units. Staff completed over 500 net new housing units between October 1st, 2023, and September 30th, 2024 in support of provincial housing targets. Council also approved the rezoning for 65 supported housing and complex care units on East Keith Road and up to 315 rental units next to Capilano University. To guide a district's planning effort and ensure future growth can be accommodated effectively, staff prepared a new interim housing needs report. Council also approved the new memorandum of understanding with BC Housing to help deliver hundreds of new affordable, social, and supporting housing units in the district. For goal number three, we continue to demonstrate fiscal responsibility by developing long-term financial policies to support and promote economic growth and prosperity. In 2024, the district's tax rates remain competitive compared to other municipalities in the lower mainland region. Some other examples of this are the council adopted economic development strategy, introducing the capital plan early, meeting council's target tax increase of 5.5%, and developing an indigenous procurement policy. For goal number four, we continue to ensure healthier and more resilient future for the community through environmental stewardship. In 2024, we achieved a 33% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from district operations and continue to increase the urban free canopy compared to 2023. We also piloted a full electric waste collection truck, the first of its type to operate in the lower mainland. We approved the electric vehicle strategy to identify future charging infrastructure needs and find district roles in the transition to electric mobility. We initiated forest health projects in Kirkston Park and Windridge Park and achieved the Bear Smart Community Designation as awarded by the province. For goal number five, we summarize activities that support access to safety, wellness, recreation, and culture opportunities from the district as well as those offered by our partner agencies. One of the highlights from this statistics is that the response times to emergency calls from the fire and rescue service was quicker for all fire halls in 2024 compared to those in 2023. And this is especially true for Linnmore and Seymour Fire Hall stations. We completed the construction of the Lynn Creek Community Recreation Centre and the Maplewood Fire and Rescue Centre. This is an all-electric facility that incorporates solar panels and is designed to to pose disaster standards to maintain services in event of emergencies such as power outages and earthquakes. We finalized the 2023-2026 Accessibility Implementation Plan, which outlines the actions to be undertaken by staff to reach the goals outlined in the district's accessibility plan. We also hosted the districts, sorry, we completed the designs of a new artificial turf field at Inter River Park and renewed artificial turf field at Windsor Secondary School. We also hosted the district's first Kairos Blancas exercise to increase indigenous cultural safety, cultural safety and humility across the organization. The North Vancouver District Public Library developed an indigenous collection strategy to represent authentic indigenous voices and to facilitate community learning and growth with respect to indigenous culture, language, and knowledge. They also expanded their collection of non-traditional offerings to over 2,400 items. Monova showcased the exhibition chief Dan George and secured a significant $400,000 partnership with BMO Financial Group to support indigenous programming, including Coast Salish initiatives. NBRC expanded programs and services, reaching and exceeding pre-pandemic participation, including a 7% increase in programming from 2023 and had over 160,000 participants in programs. Nissim partnered with the Squamish Ocean Canoe Family and paddles across Canada to develop an innovative and comprehensive approach to cultural safety training that is unique to the lands and waters of the North Shore. Over 120 municipal staff, key partners, and Nissim volunteers received this training. They also completed the North Shore Extreme Heat Resilience Project, which is focused on understanding the effects of extreme heat across the North Shore and building resilience to future frequency and intensity of extreme heat events. For goal number five, we continue to build the culture innovation, continuous learning, and collaboration within the district to ensure that we can effectively serve the community. In 2024, 70% of permit applications were received through our website, and the average feedback score for our reported problem app is 4.4 out of 5 stars. We oversaw the construction of approximately $100 million of civil infrastructure. We achieved the top employer NBC designation for a sixth time. We also adopted Simplicity, a powerful new content manager system for our webpage. And we achieved the 2024 Certificate of Recognition Designation by WorkSafe BC, which recognizes and rewards employers who go beyond the current legal requirements, have implemented an effective occupational health and safety management system, and passes certification audit to the standard set out by WorkSafe BC. And lastly, we implemented a cybersecurity managed detection and response service, a major milestone in efforts to improve cybersecurity across the district and our partner agencies. This concludes the summary of of progress highlights from our performance in 2024. For a more comprehensive list of highlights and performance metrics, please refer to the digital or printed copy of the report.
As we look forward, we expect to advance the priorities established by council in the corporate plan while balancing emergent community issues, initiatives led by senior levels of government, and any new priorities identified by council. This concludes our presentation tonight. I would like to acknowledge staff from across the district who provided data and worked together to produce this year's annual report. What remains now is an opportunity for council to consider the annual report and any public input. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much for your report. You have a bit of a script to go through before we get underway on this. This special meeting, this special council meeting is being held to receive public submissions and questions on the 2024 annual report. It's being held in a hybrid format, meaning there is a combination of in-person and electronic participation by some or all members of council or by staff and the public. We obviously have all members of council here in person. Section 99 of the community charter requires councils to consider the annual report prepared under section 98 of the community charter and receive submissions and questions from the public. The annual report must be covered at a council meeting or other public meeting, which brings us to this evening. There's no statutorily prescribed process as with other consultations such as public hearings, so the nature and extent of the public input opportunity is up to council. But accordingly, council has established the following rules for this public input opportunity. We'll go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for any other speaker not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak is spoken, there will be an opportunity for speakers to have one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional speaking opportunities will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair and if time permits. If permitted, do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the 2024 annual report. If you've provided a submission earlier in the process, there's no need to read it here as it will have already been seen by staff and summarized for the council. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. So important notes about this evening's meeting. Council's here to listen to the public, not to debate the content of the annual report. Clarifying questions of the speakers. Everyone wishing to speak will be provided an opportunity. Finally, please note that this meeting is being held via Zoom and being recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So at this point, we're going to move on to the public input portion of the meeting. And so we have a speakers list that was set up ahead of time, and I actually don't have a copy in front of me. Nobody signed up in advance of the meeting, so we're just going to go to people who are here in person or virtual. If you are a virtual participant, you need to raise your virtual hand, and then we'll put you in the speakers queue. And I don't see any call-ins, so we don't have to worry about that at this point. But at this point, would anybody else, would anybody like to speak to the annual report? Dr. Cost, come on up. I'm going to have to ask staff to move up, and I see Hazen Colbert next. Welcome. Been a bit since I've seen you in person, so.
Yes, I think this is one of the few where I felt that it's better to do that. My name is Corey Cost. Live at 2851 Colwood Drive, just for information. And I'm thankful to be able to make a presentation like this in front of council.
I'm going to ask you to speak really directly into that microphone. You're coming in a bit soft.
Yes, I will try and speak up as well.
Thank you.
My wife always keeps telling me this. So on the issue of the rules for this meeting, I would like to object that five plus five minutes is, I think, limiting for many people that would like to speak. I had assumed by the way the writing took place in past years and the legislation that the amount of time would be allocated that is necessary for people to complete their presentation in a timely manner and not have to skip parts. So I just want to formally say that I highly recommend that at least a 10, 10-minute be allocated and from that on into the future, because in the past, no such limits were imposed. On the issue of the corporate plan, the only one available on the website is last year's corporate plan. They were issued together for the 2023. In the 2024, they are missing from the website. If you do a search, you will not find the 2024 to 2027 corporate plan. I think it's valuable that you, the public, be able to discuss the two plans together. And they have some, as you saw from the staff presentation, they have some nice complimentary way of looking at the annual report. So that's my first comment. I would like to point out that there are two elephants in the room that are missing from the 2024 annual report as they were noted to be missing in the 2023 report. And one is about to do with the sewage plant. There's just very little mention, if at all, certain keywords that are just not to be found in this document of 2024 annual report. Namely, for example, the word hydrogen. There's virtually nothing about a sewage plant to be which is one of the biggest issues financially to our citizens to be found in the 2024 report. The other is discussion of the, what I consider to be an overreach by the province in the housing legislation that came forward in November 2023. You would think that there would be something about this overreach process and the fights that I have seen, not literal fights, but the discussions between the various municipalities and the province. I had hoped for a little more information about just what the implications are to our community and discuss that in the annual report. It's a very significant event. And I'm disappointed to see that there's basically nothing there. Now, as for the notification, it's supposed to be 14 days ago that we should have been, or earlier should have been notified, which means the 9th of June. Unfortunately, information wasn't announced until after that date. And I'm a little disappointed about that. It's the other municipalities on the North Shore had notices given in the papers one week earlier in the North Shore News. We were the only one that was late on the notification.
It's the newspaper notification specifically that you're referring to.
That's the only one that people traditionally have seen.
Okay.
So I'll come back for my second time, maybe scratch 5% of my presentation by this time.
Thank you. I will just say, Dr. Cost, we've had this format of five and five and then a potential third through my entire time as mayor, and I think even going back a couple of years into Mayor Walton's time. So it has been the standard practice for us for quite a while now on the annual reports that, but I do remember a time when it was quite open-ended and people could come up multiple times over and over again. That wasn't what, we didn't feel that that was what the provincial legislation specified. And so we treat it like a public hearing where it's a reasonable opportunity to be heard, not an extensive exhaustive opportunity to be heard. I understand you put in a lot of effort into your presentations to, that has a lot of detail, but this has been the the level or response that we've allowed going back at least eight years, if I recall, so.
I guess my time of remembrance goes back too far to.
Your memory goes back a long ways, sir.
Long ways, yes. Started more, well, more than 20 years ago when I'm giving these presentations. So yes, however, I think there should be some flexibility. Remember, this is not a debate, but it is time to ask questions and have them answered here, if possible.
Yeah, if possible. Now, the only questions I caught in there, because it wasn't set up as questions, were about the notification and about how we do that. And we're missing why we're sewage and housing not included in the report. Maybe we can see if we have a comment on that. Otherwise, it will, as Ms. Walker laid out, be a part of the follow-up report with all of the answers for everybody to see the questions and the answers at that time. But I will just check in with the clerk. Was there something that caused us to not have the public notification be within the two-week period, or are you aware of that situation?
I did confirm before the meeting that we met our statutory obligations for notice requirements.
So it was in the North Shore News before two weeks ago as well, or?
In the last, in the previous two weeks leading up to the meeting.
It was in two consecutive.
Yeah, two consecutive newspapers, and it was in our meeting notice, and it was on our website.
We'll look into it, but.
Basically, I have the actual hard copies at home, and we didn't beat the two weeks by about one or two days. Picky, but it's important.
Yeah, that's important. We'll take a, we'll take a look at that. Thank you. Okay. The next speaker I have is Hazen Colbert, joining us here in person. Welcome, and the same goes to you. It's been a while since I've seen you in person.
Thank you, Mayor Little. Mayor Little and staff, it's good to see you all in person, as always. I won't repeat anything that Dr. Cost has said, although I do affirm that I agree with everything that he said. I'd just like to start off this meeting tonight by expressing my unconditional support for the Palestinian people who have been under genocide for some months, if not some decades, from the state of Israel. It's a terrible tragedy, and I just really don't know how to express my sadness with respect to that matter. Also, in the context that we got a large, very large Persian population here, not just in the District of North Vancouver, but on the North Shore, the unsolicited violence perpetrated by probably the most evil man that I've seen in my life, President Donald Trump, against the Republic of Iran that's resulted in deaths is a tragedy that I really don't understand, and I truly feel for the Persian population in our municipality. I cancel, I'm going to now turn to the, to the annual report to ensure that there is no, to ensure that I comply with my commitment as always to de-escalate any conflicts. I will limit myself to the five plus five, although I have considerably more to speak to. But those other things that I'm going to, that I would speak to are actually mistakes in the report. I'm just going to leave those out. What I would like to speak to are items that I call matters requiring attention. These are things that I'd like to see added in the July summary that you put up. The annual report states that we have 107 million in cash and a further 236 million in investments for a total of $343 million. That is a substantive amount of money. Our annual surplus last year was on page 16, $54 million, which increased our accumulated surplus to a staggering $1.129.8 billion. In 2024, our taxes went up by 5.5%, and I believe this year they're scheduled to go up by 5.9%. Any increase in taxes, when you're sitting here with 1.2 billion in accumulated surplus and running a $54 million a year annual surplus makes absolutely no sense. It just doesn't make sense. I can't figure out why there is a tax increase this year. But there's even something else that's more confusing. Last year, this municipality issued $20 million in debt. Why would you need to issue $20 million in debt when you're sitting here with 300? Why would you need to issue twenty million dollars in debt when you're sitting here with three hundred and thirty million? In investments and cash, in fact, over one hundred million in cash issuing debt doesn't make any sense. And what's confusing about the issuance of the debt was when I looked into the actual report, I expected to see some detail. The term of the debt, the interest rate of the debt, how it's being extinguished. No, it's there, twenty million. So that's a matter that requires attention. That has to be explained. Specifically, the, the, the term, the rate, et cetera, of that, that needs to be there in the notes. There was one other thing that I noticed and that was in part of the annual report, there was a reference to what's referred to as. Very liquid and liquid assets. The term liquidity is one in which it's binary. It's either liquid or illiquid. There's no such thing as very liquid compared to liquid and that's an error that I think needs to be addressed. That's why I would ask that that error be addressed as a second matter requiring. Matter requiring attention. There's something else that's mentioned in the annual report, an accretion expense. Never seen an accretion expense. I haven't clues to what that means. So perhaps if it is gonna be in there, there would be a definition of what an accretion expense is because. I've heard the phrase accretion, but it has nothing to do with finance. So perhaps that could be added. I'm gonna now just leave the right, I think everything else that I've got to speak to is part of the Sophie. So I'm just gonna stop now. And I'll, and I'll come back. Except, Councilman Murray, if you're confused by something I said, I will be happy to explain it. Oh, okay. Okay. There are copies over in the corner if you want to see them. Yeah. Okay. I'll come back when you call me. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak a first time? I see no other hands. Raise your virtual hand if you're online, if you'd like to speak a first time. Okay, so I'm gonna go back to Court Cost for a second time speaker. And I will say, unfortunately, we, we did have. We intended to have a finance rep here tonight. Our CFO had a flight canceled and ended up flying back into town late. And is not yet available. So we'll, which, sorry. Yeah, so unfortunately, we don't have the CFO from finance here at this time. So even those finance questions, we're gonna have to work to get a response and answer back to. I actually can't see Ilya online. Dr. Cost, welcome back.
Your worship, before I proceed, I have a simple question. June the sixteenth, I sent this document. About a session I had with Chat GPT to all members of Mayor and Council. I'm not sure if you have. That copy in front of you. I have actually bought extra copies in case anyone needs, needs them. I'm quite prepared to distribute them to members of council in case you don't have. A copy of this document before you. So this is my first attempt to actually look at a complete document. And I asked Chat GPT to. Bring me up to the speakers how I could go through that and ask questions about it. So I found it surprisingly easy to do. The section I would like to accentuate is the section called Risk and Outlook. Which came back. Saying. Just look at the report and tell me what you think is interesting. So the risk and outlook section pressures from Metro Vancouver, utility costs, reduced provincial grants. Forecasting a five point five property tax increase annually for the next five years. Unless mitigated and fiscal tightening is expected with less flexibility in the coming years. I asked another question. Are you able to assess if there was any glaring risks or missing elements in this report? And it flagged a number of issues. The first one being in the Metro Vancouver utility cost shock. And which it has three. Columns. Why does this matter? What the report says and why it could still bite us? So in summary, that is, it states that the sewage levy will jump seventy percent in twenty twenty five. And it's protected to quadruple and increase by three hundred and twenty four percent by twenty twenty nine. Then there's a section on provincial housing mandates of twenty two thousand plus new homes. Why does this matter? Well, it drives major loads on the road. Sewers, parks, crimes, policing and fire. Those are not really discussed in the annual report though. The other element was tightening fiscal flexibility, which I already alluded to before. Then there's property taxes increases, which I've also mentioned before. And then the climate or extreme weather, which we had a one in two hundred year event. But there's not much detail in the annual report. I thought it was a fairly significant issue to discuss there. But there's not much there. So we come to the next, next section, which is gaps or thin disclosure to address. In the next report, these are recommendations. There's no multi-year sensitivity analysis and the details are in what I said to council. Capital funding gaps are rather opaque. Cybersecurity risks are only briefly discussed. Pension exposures discussion is minimal as it have been for several years. And people have asked about that before. What does this all mean? Just what would be the effect of a one percent drop in the planned investment, for example? Would really be useful to know for the public just how sensitive we are to exposures. So resulting for the existing pension plans. Then there's legal and contingency tables is high level only. And climate adaptation, cost curve is missing. Where's some of the money? We know there's kind of. Issues coming up, but there's no numbers attached to them. Number seven is the demographic service demand modeling, the community profiles changing fast with more sixty five plus cohort. Some informations that let me read, however, the bottom line. The twenty twenty four report gives an honest snapshot of the district's finances and flags the big. Shock issues. The urgent tasks are now to quantify those shocks. Show how they translate into tax increases or rate increases scenarios. And line them up against the reserve strengths that you have. Previous speaker has already noted how come we have. Borrowed when we have so much reserve. I certainly would do that as a homeowner ever do that. I choose what I can pay the debts down first. Because my interests are not as high as the debt interest. And adding the missing elements that I just mentioned would move the report from being descriptive. To really decision ready. I think that's the important part. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like me to put you on the list for a third and final time?
I'll wait until all other speakers have either come, then they'll come back.
Would anybody like to speak a second time? I think Mr. Colbert, you indicated an interest in that. So first or second time, members of the public joining us virtually, I'd like to add the name to the list there. Welcome to.
Good evening again, everyone. For the second part of my presentation tonight or my submission. I'm gonna focus mostly on what I saw in Sophie because. There are some, there is some information in Sophie that links back to the annual report and to borrow word from Dr. Cost. When you put the two of them together, something's opaque. And so let me first of all, address two, at least two items in Sophie that I found unusual. One of them was the payment to a supplier, five star service products, one hundred thousand dollars. A cert, five star service products makes uniforms. And I found that one hundred thousand dollar expense for uniforms seems high unless those uniforms. This is a once every ten year expense, one, three, five year expense, but if it's annually, that's a massive number. So I think that there might be something to add there that relates to the annual report. There was also a six hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy three dollar expense to Bunyard Public Affairs Limited. I found that one odd because in fact, to the best of my knowledge, it really wasn't to Bunyard. It was to Asham Lanny. And I'm unclear as to why all of it's been included under Bunyard Public Affairs. Ash does work, sorry, Mrs. Manley does work for Bunyard, but as I understand, this was a consulting contract for her. And it's not properly been disclosed. Then there was also a staggering number, that was I would best call it. Legal costs, just to use one, one of your legal providers, Faskons. Two point five million. That's a, that's a stunning number for a municipality of that size. And that's when I went back to the annual report because what I was looking for in the notes was a section that referenced. Litigation against the District of North Vancouver. You would normally find a section that specifically identifies litigation. Well, there's some sort of. Wandering about words, but avoid that word litigation. And so I actually went to the, to the, to the British Columbia Court Service online and started to count up. The number of cases against the District of North Vancouver. I was shocked. And I can't even remember the numbers for twenty twenty four. They were so high. But when I looked at the twenty twenty five numbers, I clearly say, okay. Nineteen ongoing cases that started just this year, including five in June. And I know you've got two in the hopper on the way in. That type of thing requires notes in the financial statements. So there's a matter that requires attention, much greater detail when you've got those types of numbers. There was also a reference to one hundred and twelve million in assets under construction. Again, I was trying to reconcile. That number which shows up in the annual report to payments and I, and I couldn't do it. So there's no way to know what the hundred and twelve million. I mean, in my head, I said, part of it's probably the improvements being made to the Lynn Creek. Community center and part of it's Maplewood, the Maplewood Fire Center, but that, you know, that doesn't come nearly close to a hundred and twelve million. You know, you might got, look, looking at thirty million there. So I think that that hundred and twelve million needs to be broken out. So that would be my fourth matter requiring attention. And then there were, there were one other thing that I noticed a number of, we'll call them compensation numbers that were unusual. And I actually have five of them, but in retrospect, I'm only going to mention one. I'm only gonna mention one because it doesn't seem to be in the right place. Mr. Wardell left his job before the beginning of twenty twenty four, but he was still paid one hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. Now, it seems that if he was brought back as a consultant, which I actually fully understand. Then that number would have actually been in the supplier section, not in the. Employment section. I think there's an error there. I may be wrong. But a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to sort of have as the leftover that we hadn't yet paid the guy. Even if it was said, you know, accumulated sick leave. Who has a hundred thousand dollars on sick leave? So that's my fifth MRA that I think needs to be fixed. I have just a few seconds left. I'm not gonna talk anymore. So I'm just gonna turn that time over to Dr. Cost.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and even though those matters are mostly originating in the Sophie, we'll make sure they're part of the report and response. Thank you.
I say that because I think two of them actually belong in the annual report.
Okay, would anybody else like to address a, the matter for a first, second or third time? And Dr. Cost, you haven't repeated yourself, so you're absolutely welcome to come up and, and do a third five minute presentation. And to confirm, I haven't seen any virtual hands pop up throughout the course of the meeting so far.
Well, start things off on a better foot. There are a lot of good things about this report, a lot of very useful, interesting. Information in the report, more so I think than in past years. So I appreciate that. However, as usual, people are usually easier to criticize things. Than lauded. So, but I wish to make that expression to add some balance to my input as a citizen. So let's look at page seventy six. There are many pages look at, but I'm just gonna look at one thing. And as you know, water sprinkling regulations are a bit of a, a task for. Residents to absorb. Because no matter what you do, three. Hours per week is not going to. Leave your lawns in a very nice state. Especially if the weather is quite hot during that week. But page seventy six notes that the water consumption per capita is, is noted as. Five hundred and four liters per capita per day. But of course, that assumes also includes residential, commercial, institutional. Industrial park firefighting and all these other things. It's not just the second number, which is three hundred and seven liters. Per person per day for a single family residential use, which is a category I belong to. So let's go and look at what Metro Vancouver has on its dashboard. For the per capita water use. So I have, I'll leave a copy for council, but it's been going down from two thousand and nine. At well over five hundred liters per day to now. About three hundred and eighty four. So three hundred and eighty four liters is the average across Metro Vancouver for our homes. What's ours again? Three hundred and seven. Which is quite a bit less. We are known as places that have gardens and lots of lawns. And you would think that we're really hogs. Well, it turns out. They're much more likely to. Water or use water per capita away from the North Shore, which came as a surprise. And I really would like to have that explained actually. Why is the case? If we're so low, why do we have such harsh? Limits placed on our sprinkling. But I still would have liked to have seen twice, but maybe not three hours, but at least twice a week. Maybe an hour and a half, split, split it down in some way. That'd be more useful, I think, to our residents. That's all I really wanted to say. There's lots of other issues, but they would go well beyond my time. So I'll leave that in the tray here I assume.
Thank you.
The reference is there so you can easily look up the website and get more copies. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your feedback. Yes, I can tell you it's a very active discussion at Metro Vancouver Water Committee. About the average uses in the region, water metering potential. And strategies to get our, our consumption down, but you're right. We actually have relative. We actually have relatively low usage. In some places in the lower mainland, the yards are quite large. Delta Langley, you know, some of the other communities and farms, but we're lower than average. And what'll be interesting is we've asked Metro Vancouver to break out and compare the water metered communities to the non water metered communities to see whether there's actually a medium term, long term benefit to water metering. Because on the face of it, it doesn't look like there's a significant difference. And so we're getting them to dig deeper into that. But thank you for your presentation. Would anybody else like to add their comments a first, second or third time? Okay, seeing none, I'll say to Clark that we have exhausted the public speaking list on this matter. And so it would be appropriate counsel to for somebody to create a motion to receive. Moved by councillor Murray as their seconder on receipt. Seconded by councillor back prepared to call the question. All in favor, contrary minded motion is carried. So this is now received. And when will one of the next stages for this, for any council comment or for the return report from staff?
Through your worship, staff have taken note of the questions and will follow up on any points raised tonight at council direction. I believe there will be a summary report in July on the website, which responds to all of the questions that were posed this evening.
Will we receive that at a regular meeting of council? Just so it's on the record that the.
It'll be published online. I don't believe that we have a.
Okay, we'll have to look at that because I want to make sure it's given the same prominence as the as the the questions being asked, but we'll we'll look at that. Okay, we've completed the business of this evening's meeting. I will accept adjournment. Accepted. Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff for preparing the report and thank you to members of the public for your feedback this evening. There is a regular meeting of council starting at seven o'clock in this room. So if you would like to stick around, you're welcome to, but otherwise this meeting is adjourned.